I'd like to call the Northborough School Committee meeting to order on this evening, Wednesday, June 5th. And the first order of business is to nominate a chairperson. So I will take any motions to nominate the chairperson. Ms. Frank?
Superintendent Martino, I'd like to nominate Kelly Gannett for another term as chairperson of the Northborough K-8 School Committee if she would accept.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do you accept?
Thank you so much. I'm honored and humbled by the faith that you guys have in me to take on another term. I gladly continue.
Great. Fantastic.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Do we need to officially vote now?
We do.
Take that back.
All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you. I don't think, I think I've used this like maybe once. I always forget to do it. Okay, so the next order of business for, is to elect a chair, a vice chairperson.
Kelly?
Yes.
I'd like to nominate Bryce for vice chair.
I have a motion for Bryce.
Second.
A second from Joan. I've, any discussion?
Does he accept?
I would accept, yeah. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. It was exciting to do last year and look forward to being of service again.
One heartbeat away.
Huh?
One heartbeat away.
That's right. That's right.
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to say I would really like to see you continue your leadership role.
Thank you.
And sort of shadow Kelly for potential chair.
That'd be great.
Years to come.
Yeah.
Lauren gave me the riot act vote. You need to leader and mentor more. I said, okay, I can, I'll take on it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
All right. And for secretary?
Wait that vote.
Oh, vote, yeah. All in favor? Unanimous? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Bryce. And for secretary? Yes?
I'd like to nominate Lauren as secretary.
Second.
I'll go for Kristen. I heard you kind of simultaneously. So a motion by Joan and seconded by Kristen. Would you accept?
I do.
And any discussion? I think Lauren would do a great job this year as officially being the secretary. And I will share with that a little more later. Apparently, Joan, you were the secretary this previous year.
Yes.
Lauren took the minutes for one of the meetings and she signed it.
Thank you.
And she signed it.
Did they get accepted?
The secretary.
As secretary.
And so that's, that's on my agenda for later on the agenda to do it.
Perfect.
But I said, I said, so you know what? Let's do it right this year.
Yeah.
I think having Lauren as a.
See, you had, you had training. You didn't even know it.
Yeah.
You had training. You did a great job.
All right. All in favor? Unanimous? Pass? Thank you. The next is the union. We have to have three members to represent the union. One position is for the chair and then the other two. Historically, Northborough has done the longest.
Tenured.
Tenured board members as it. So, but we can really do anything. Does anybody have? You want to make a motion?
Yeah, so I think in my six years, I've only been a union vote once when I was chair. So I would love to have a union vote this year.
Great.
I move to elect Lauren as a member of the union.
Do you want to do?
Like more than once.
Yeah. Do you want to do the whole union?
Sure.
I move to elect Lauren Bailey-Jones as a representative for the superintendency Union Number Three.
One, one, one.
Second.
Second. Okay. So second by Joan. All in favor? Unanimous? The second seat.
I'd like to nominate Joan Frank as a representative of Superintendency Union Number Three.
Great.
Thank you. Accept.
All in favor?
Oh, I'll second.
Oh, second. Motion by Bryce. Second, I'm sorry, guys. It's really hot in here. It's getting to my brain. I think I've never done this before. Seconded by Lauren. All in favor? Okay. Unanimous? And the third seat?
And just to make it official is to nominate Kelly Gannett as the third member of the Superintendency Union Number Three.
Second.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay. All right. I think that's all of that. One, two. Now, recognition of retirees. Thank you. Thank you for bearing with me. Sorry. It's hot.
This evening, I'd like to recognize our retirees. Barb, Karen, and Sue Brunel to join me. I thought we could do this as a pride. I know each of you love the spotlight. So this is your, your, your voice. So we are very honored to acknowledge three retirees this evening in Northborough. Combined, they have over 113 years of teaching experience. And they have been outstanding employees. They have worked very closely to impact the lives of children. I think if you added up all the children that these folks have worked with over the years, I think it would be a large number. It would be a big number and very impressive. So you can make a difference. You can have a employee that you can take better model of what it means to be an employee of the year. So congratulations. I do have a little few words about each of you. I'm going to go from, I am going to go from least experienced to most experienced. So Barb Dowd has the least amount of experience with 36 years. She has something to learn from her colleagues.
I have.
So Barb's date of hire was 9/13/1988. And I would imagine that some people in the room weren't even born at that time. So it's just a mess. Maybe, maybe not. She also did her student internship at Proctor. She was a first, third, and fourth grade teacher. I was able to work closely with Barb as an Atlas Ambassador. And she's on a Bible job, on a full employee. You can't fill your food because of your food. So thank you, Lauren. And the second most experienced is Karen. Karen, who has 37 years. So Karen has, is a grade three teacher at Lincoln. Her date of hire was September 8th, 1987. And she has been a grade two and a grade three teacher. She's been a recipient of many grants. She's been a elementary curriculum leader. And she has been an outstanding educator. Again, has been student-centered and has been an amazing teacher for community in North borough. So your experiences were missed and your shoes will be replaced with smaller shoes.
Figured.
Thank you. So congratulations. Now, the most experienced is Sue Brunel. So Sue Brunel has four decades. I'm going to say decades because it makes it sound like.
Wow.
Forty years in the public school. So, you know, that is an amazing amount of time to dedicate a person, a part of their life to this work. You have been an outstanding educator. You have worked on behalf of the kids. You are so student-centered. You have been a lead teacher at Proctor, a member of the area. You have been a recipient of many grand awards. And all three of you have had positive notes from families and former students who file with them. You remember all of the great ones. So we will miss you greatly. You know, losing this level of experience is a loss for the district. But you left in a better place. So thank you.
Thank you so much.
And we have. So depending on your experience, they give us a little bit of that. So this is Sue Brunel.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's a big pleasure.
Thank you.
And this is Barb.
She must play sports to have that too.
Thank you.
And we do have a five-minute break.
Perfect.
It's going to melt.
All right. We could, Owen? All right, thank you so much. Were we, did we shut the sound off? Oh, yeah, okay. I was like, I remember I texted somebody once in the Board of S- like meeting. I was like, oh, just so you know, the sound's still up. All righty, we are back into session. It is six fifty-four. I don't know if we need that for the record or not, but we are going to move on to audience sharing. Is there anybody who would like to say anything? We will have audience sharing again at the end of the meeting. Um, principal reports. We have all of them here tonight. Just so exciting to see you all. Elementary, okay. Yeah. So we'll start with the elementary. I'll let you guys decide, fight it out, who wants to go first.
Usually two newest.
The two newest? We'll just go right in order, right there. Right there, starting left and right.
Left to the right.
Yeah.
So, thank you. And May has been a very busy month. It seems like three months in one. For the first time in our four years, Lincoln Street classrooms went on field trip. All grades went out on trips. We attended the Montrier Museum, Tower Hill, we do a little competition in the Gannan Division. On Monday coming up, on the first day, we have our grade five mixer Palooza, where we're going to bring all of our grade five elementary students together at Mackey Park for an in-town field trip. We have activities in stations planned out. We are parent volunteers, and that's going to be a wonderful chance for kids to get to know each other before they transition to a middle school. It's a reimagined plan that has been done in the past, so we are really happy to bring that back as well. Throughout May, we left no day unscheduled. Our nurse conducted posterial screenings. We met with parents for parent kindergarten orientation. We navigated through the growing and changing unit with curiosity and grace. Additionally, we had the long anticipated tours of Melican Middle School for our fifth graders. We had a grade five drama performance. And this past Friday, we had the senior stroll, which is a new tradition from Algonquin, and that was wonderful and invited by all of the different elementary schools. Grade three, they have been joining to organize these carnival games on the science concepts of force, motion, and push and pull. And grade two is experiencing enrichment, a field trip, a math field trip, the Gannan Division, a science group in grade one-five, doing dissection with all pellets and squid. So it's very active, very involved in May. June brings up orientations, middle school chorus visits, kindergarten spectacular next week. We welcomed the newest polar bears to the cave this week with a concert by Luanne Crosby. The current K and grade ones' tunes join to include, be included to welcome this new welcome party. On June twelfth at one-thirty, we will honor our fifth graders at the end of the year with farewell celebration. And on July, June thirteenth, we have a clap out for the students in grade five that are transitioning to the middle school and, of course, a last day luncheon for our staff. I wanted to extend my congratulations to Karen Norsworthi for her seventy, thirty-seven years of hard work, dedication, and humor at LSS. Her contributions to the staff, families, and, most importantly, the students is incredible. She's a humble, selfless, and caring educator who meets students where they are and sets their journey on for happiness and joy. Thank you again to the Lincoln Street PTO for your continuous support this year. From field trips to enrichment programs, their dedication to our students and staff were commendable. Thursday night, we did have to cancel our end-of-the-year pizza party because of the inclement weather coming in. And then I just want to thank all of you, the school committee, and NASA and Central Office, for making my first year in the building so welcoming and joyful. So, thank you.
All right, Proctor School, the end of the school year at Proctor has been filled with exciting events, celebrating our school spirit along with community engagement in May, busy month. We did have our annual field day, which was Mr. Herrera's final event before his retirement. The day was a success, and I just want to thank the families who came together to support our penguins. Additionally, our students participated in the Fun Run. It's typically an event that happens in the fall, but because of the root project, we did have to shift it to the spring just for this year. It was warm, but we all pushed through, and the kids didn't seem impacted by it. However, the parents, as we were standing there, were definitely seeing pretty warm. But I do want to say thank you to all the families who sponsored the runners. It was a really fun event. We had our fifth graders perform in our Proctor Spring Concert as well as the all-town chorus event. And lastly, Proctor had a really nice showing of athletes from the Titanade hosted at Algonquin, and just a special thank you to our district's support administrators for organizing that event. Last evening, they hosted our informational session for incoming kindergarten families, and this morning, our future kindergarteners enjoyed a stuffed animal storytime in our school library at Proctor, which was a blast. It was wonderful to see our youngest and very enthusiastic penguins who are going to join us in the fall. And then, just as the year comes to a close, I want to recognize Mrs. Marv Towne, Mrs. Suprano, and Mr. Fernando Herrera for their years of dedication to Proctor and the North Borough community as a whole. Their outstanding educators who are retiring at the end of this school year, you know, their impact on our students has been found, and actually, former students whose children are now actually going to Proctor as well. So that's a funny experience, but just thank you to those educators, their passion are inspiring, and they will be great people.
I like going third because they've already mentioned a lot of things we all have, so I kept mine a little shorter. But last Wednesday, we held our annual Coffee House Talent Show at Z, and it was great to see all the different talents that the kids were able to show, and we had lots of fun snacks and coffee and drinks for everybody. I did a Rubik's Cube showdown with a student, which I lost, but it was a lot of fun, and it was just a nice event for the school community. Today was our field day, which is why I'm a little red in the eyes, but we had a great day for that. We had a lot of volunteers, about fifty people came to volunteer. The kids had a wonderful day, and I want to say thank you to Mrs. De Simone for making the day a huge success. She puts a lot of time and effort into organizing all of that. And like I said, it was beautiful and wonderful time for everybody, and the weather cooperated, which was great. And then finally, our fifth grade promotion will be next Wednesday, June twelfth, from one-thirty to two-thirty, and we're excited to celebrate this amazing group of students that are leaving Z but moving on to bigger and better things at Melican. And after the ceremony, we have a reception in the courtyard where they get to sign their books and see all the staff and visit with each other and test with each student. So we're looking forward to that in closing out the year.
So several special events happened in June already so far, and we have a couple more that are coming next week. But the halls are filled with bustling, special year-end events. These include Scream Day. We had an acrobat, Lee Lu, who performed for us last week, who was fantastic. Highly recommend her to the other PTOs. We had concerts, art shows, a biography fair, a state fair. We also welcomed our K-five student and parents to attend our, I'm sorry, our kindergarten parents to attend the screening this week. These new Peaslee pandas will come back next week to join our current K to watch the Comfort Nico Players puppet show. We will also celebrate our older students. These outstanding fifth graders will be recognized during graduation ceremony next week. Our fantastic PTO held our end-of-year celebration this Friday. Everyone was so excited to come together to share memories of the year and make some new ones. The PTO has a special end-of-year lunch that they have planned, and I think it's from all the other elementary schools too, on our last day, which is very, the teachers really like that. We're thankful for all of their support all year long and their appreciation of our teachers. We're really proud of our accomplishments across the district, especially those that we worked really hard on regarding curriculum and implementation. Teachers are continuously looking at new and existing curriculum to find ways of meeting the needs of students and to be able to refine those things each year through their collaboration with one another. We also have quite an extensive leadership team where different teachers take on leadership goals and take a key point in driving those curriculum areas further. So that's really quite an accomplishment, I think we can all agree on that. We're extremely proud of our accomplishments at Peaslee. It starts with our custodial staff, Mr. Joe Jose Baez and Mr. Edwin Gallagher, who have worked tirelessly since day one to maintain the cleanliness and sparkle of Peaslee School. I also want to express my gratitude to our lunchroom staff, Mrs. Sherry Misbet, for their special attention to the meals they provide to students every day. Lastly, a big thank you to our art teacher, Mrs. Money, who participated in organizing a fifth grade art fair, or art show, on the night of the concert for fifth graders, and it was just a really great connection of the allied arts, and it was just really, the work she does is incredible, along with our music staff as well. So at Peaslee also, we have continued to look at our school improvement plan at the end of the year to really remind ourselves of the work we have regarding our core values and assisting students to be crystal and creative thinkers in a supportive and positive community of learning. And we thank you for your interest in the work that we do and appreciate your support.
Thank you all so much. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Kristen?
Yeah, I would say thank you for all of your work on leaving schools. You've all been awesome this year. I'm personally really glad to see field trips coming back full force everywhere after COVID. I thought there was going to be trouble in my house because both of my kids, when you brought up the list a couple of months ago, were going to Tower Hill, where we have a membership. And so every time, I'm like, oh, we're going to Tower Hill. There's grumbles and stuff, but they both had a wonderful time, and, you know, obviously there were a lot of activities that now they're excited to show us next time we go. It was great to see all the grades going on different field trips this year again. And I was able to attend the fourth grade drama program at Lincoln Street, which was amazing, you know, the kids were so excited, they were so great. It is on cable, on North Row Cable, on YouTube, if anyone wants to watch it too, you can see the whole thing there. Those are all great. Yeah, and thank you.
I'd like to pick up on something that Jennifer mentioned, because I don't think you got the thanks, and that was for the senior stroll that you had. As the regional member, I attended the graduation on Sunday, and before the pomp and circumstance and the graduates came out, I was talking to two of the advisors and talking about the different activities that they have, like they have the senior sunrise that they do, all the other things, and they mentioned the stroll that you had, and about them coming down and seeing it. And then a community member said, go on the Gonkgram, which is for Algonquin, and they have pictures there. And that was wonderful. The seniors are in their caps and gowns. You had all the students on the hallways, and kids made signs and everything, and that was absolutely wonderful. I think this was the first year-
It was the first year Principal Bevan started it, and I think it's going to continue.
All the, that's what I'm saying, all of you had it, which is just phenomenal, and I'm sure it's going to increase by the attendance from the seniors. But it was, I think it was really wonderful to see, and I think the kids are going to remember that. And, you know, it just shows how we work together. We are, as the motto here is, we're thirteen schools, we're one district, you know, we all work together, and those kids are going to remember, even the kids that are in your classes, they're going to remember someday when they have that cap and gown. I thought it was great that they wore their caps and gowns, because maybe some of the little kids in nursery school had a cap and gown on, and they're like, wow, I want to be like this big kid someday. So I want to just thank you for everything that you did to help to facilitate that and tell the staff definitely, because I think those were priceless memories that you did. And thank you for all that you do during the year, and enjoy your summer. I hope you get a vacation in there somewhere. But thank you very much, and you two are now no longer the newbies. You'll be senior staff next year. Thank you very much.
I know, it was a year ago that we were sitting here prior to our recognition of officers, when Jen and Stacy sat down with us, and I can't even believe it's only been a year. Like, it seems like we've lived a few years this year, but great job. Thank you for joining our district and continuing to be in our district. And thank you for all your hard work at Z and Peaslee also, and appreciate it all through your, have a good summer.
Good to be without them.
Good to be. If we are all set, we will move on to Melican.
All right, so we're going to do a little bit of a shift, so Keith and Becky are going to move, and Gretchen Bean, Michelle Carr will present their update.
Okay. And then go on to the next agenda.
Through the next agenda item.
Perfect.
Without the fan, yeah.
Feel free to move your chairs up closer if you need to.
I think you can turn the angle of that fan.
This way?
Yeah. Looks like it's adjustable.
I know, I was going to say, does it tilt upright?
Yeah, that's it. No? Scotch tape holding it on? Okay.
That'll help airflow a little bit better, though.
I do, actually, I do feel it a little bit.
Do you? Yes. You're going to go down that.
Well, they can't hear if the fan's on. That's what they were saying, but, so, it's like, do you want to hear?
All right. Okay. So I'm going to just speak briefly about Melican. I'm Gretchen Bean. So the past several weeks have been busy, just like at our elementary schools. Our seventh graders visited Patriot Place, the Hall of Fame over at Gillette, for a STEM field trip. Our fifth graders visited Melican for their student-led tours and meeting with our counselors. Our students were treated to a beautiful day out in the backyard, BMX, Dial Action Sports, anti, sorry, Dial Action Sports, Anti-Bullying and Drug Awareness presentations. Thanks to our PTO for coming up with the idea and sponsoring, it was great. Our sixth graders took their annual trip to Boundless Adventures. About half of our students went on the trip last week, and then the other half went today. Students and teachers had a wonderful time. Our seventh and eighth graders learned some Latin dances in their French and Spanish classes last week. This is a favorite tradition for our students. And our spring sports seasons concluded this week. We had baseball and softball games yesterday and then today. No, two days ago, Monday, the days are all mixing together. Sixth graders have their CO2 car races in Tech Ed, and eighth graders are launching their bottle rockets at the end of this week. We have three music concerts this week at Algonquin. Our eighth grade farewell dance takes place on Friday this week. And then next week, eighth graders will have their field day, and at nine o'clock on June thirteenth, we'll hold our eighth grade graduation, followed by a staff luncheon sponsored by our PTO. So a lot of really great stuff going on at Melican, and we're going to talk about some other stuff today, too.
Well, we said congratulations to Jen and Stacy for their first year. I want to congratulate you on your first year also here, and I'm sure it feels like about ten years now.
In some ways, yes, in some ways, no. Thank you.
So, thank you. Lots of exciting things. I've heard a lot about them, being involved and stuff, so.
Great.
Thank you. Move right along? Unless anybody has any questions about that.
Okay, so we are going to present tonight about the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey data. There was a slide shared last month with the school committee with some key indicators, and so we got our school-specific data on Monday, just this Monday, a couple days ago. And so we wanted to share the data that pertains to the topics that were addressed last month, just to kind of do a comparison. So this was the slide that was shared last month with physical fighting and weapons, and the comparison over to the right was two thousand twenty-one, and then the two thousand twenty-three data, which is here. So some of the numbers went down, some of them went up. This was combined, North Row and South Row data, so this is Trotter and Melican, and it includes grades six, seven, and eight. Again, we got our data on Monday, and so honing in on this particular topic, what we have noticed is that this top part is the chart from two thousand twenty-one. Down here is the two thousand twenty-three data from Melican. So these green boxes just show the year, the twenty-one to twenty-three comparison, so students as a whole, entire group. So if we look down at our two thousand twenty-three data, we see that there are some green arrows, meaning that the data is moving in a favorable direction, and then there are some red arrows showing that there's some increases. So in particular, the increases that students report in a physical fight on school property, in a physical fight on school property over the past twelve months. So what I wanted to see is, what does our data look like for the same group of students? So if we look at our sixth graders from two thousand twenty-one, this is the yellow box here, and we look at their data two years later, so these are our same students, actually, those numbers at the bottom have gone down. So that, to me, shows some growth, that kids who are self-reporting physical fight on school property lifetime, physical fight on school property in the last twelve months, those actual numbers from the same student set actually go down over here. So that's something for us to look at. The other thing that we wanted to understand, again, we just got the data, there's a lot there, but was what's the actual question that is asked that is showing these numbers? So the question here, in a physical fight on school property lifetime, the question is just that, have you ever been in a physical fight on school property? So when I read that, a question that I have is, does this mean when school is in session during school hours only? Does it mean when, during the school year? Does it include school property, you know, over the summer? Does it include when kids are showing up at Z school during a half-day and something happens? So those are just follow-up questions that I have that are not addressed in this survey, but again, those are some of the things that I was kind of curious about. So the same with the one at the bottom, in a physical fight on school property past twelve months. The corresponding question to that is very much the same, during the past twelve months. So they took the survey in November of two thousand twenty-three. Have you ever been in a physical fight on school property? So it's a yes or no question. So again, I have some of the same questions with kids self-reporting over the past twelve months. Again, does that include the summer months? Does that include time before or after school day? I don't know the answer to those questions. So we certainly are going to be focusing on the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey data this summer, as we always do when we get the reports. There are a lot of other topics that are covered, but I know these were the ones where there were some questions. So again, what I was happy about in initially looking at the data was this growth from this particular group of sixth graders who are now eighth graders. A lot of these numbers have gone down. So that, to me, was good. Certainly, there's plenty of work to do. One of the other things that I thought was interesting from the data, this is comparison data from the time we've been involved with the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. It's only seventh and eighth graders, the first couple of times that we participated, our sixth graders were not included in this particular instrument, so in this particular survey. So what I think, when I look at this, is that these lines are relatively flat. Physical fight in a lifetime is this red line, and you can see that it was the highest when we first took this survey. And then there was a little bit of a peak in two thousand fourteen, I don't know what that was about. Little bit of a peak here, and then it went down. This blue line is the next one. I know it's a little bit hard to see, but again, much higher when we started, goes down, sort of flat lines, goes up a little in two thousand twenty-one, down a hair. Carried a weapon lifetime, and that is an example, they give us a gun or a knife or a club. Those numbers, again, are fairly flat. When I look back here, I look at carried a weapon on school property, and it is, our eighth graders are zero this year. Our seventh graders reported zero. Our sixth graders in November reported, you know, one point three percent said that they had, so that, you know, is interesting, something certainly to think about. But, so that was the data from the survey that pertained to the question, I think, that came up about the early, the key indicator. So we did try to dig into that as much as we could. What we also looked at was our own school data across the years around, we looked at suspensions, because that is something formal, that is something that is clearly documented. So the number of suspensions for physical aggression, so it could be slapping, pushing, hitting, fighting, something like that. Twenty-one, twenty-two, there were a total of four. In terms of how many of those were actually back-and-forth altercations, like an actual sort of a fight, one of them was. So that accounts for two of these, because these represent students that were suspended. Last year, it was at nine, with two of them actually being back-and-forth altercations, which means that's four of those students. And then this year, we have eight, again, two actual back-and-forth fights, altercations. So I think there's data from the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey that we will look more closely at. Again, there are a lot of other parts to that survey, but certainly the part I just focused on was the one about physical violence, and there are a lot of other things that we want to explore. But I think in general, sort of, you know, kids' behavior and how we are helping them to, you know, navigate that, what our responses are to that are things that we are looking at closely. So so far, we have, we are implementing a school culture survey to all students. That will happen before the end of the year. That will happen before the end of the year. We have implemented a survey to all staff, which closes at the end of this week, around school culture and discipline and behavior. We are revisiting our student handbook and making some adjustments this summer, based on the data. We will continue our meetings with Algonquin and Trotter. So what's been really nice is that, as a new assistant principal, Gretchen and the Trotter assistant principal, who's also new this year, they have worked closely together this year, along with a couple of the Algonquin assistant principals, to really sort of talk about what kinds of behavior are we seeing, you know, at Malachin, at Trotter, at Algonquin? What are the preventative kinds of things that we're doing at each of those three schools? What are the responses or the reactions to misbehavior? So that's been extremely helpful. We have not really done that in the past, to the extent that we have now, including kind of looking at suspension data together to kind of talk about different kinds of things that kids do that may get them suspended in one place and may not in another place. So that's been extremely helpful, and we're gonna continue that work moving forward. We'll also be revisiting our three-pronged approach to student behavior, which, you know, we gained some traction with this year, but we certainly have some work to do. So we, you know, our three kind of main tenets are that if we have clear behavioral expectations for kids and explicitly teach them, they're much more likely, obviously, to meet those expectations. So whenever we have big events, like assemblies or field trips or anything like that, we do explicitly and directly teach students what they can expect, what we expect of them, what we expect of them in terms of their behavior, and what happens if some of those expectations are not met, which has been really helpful. We've done similar things in terms of if there have been issues. For example, outside at Brain Break, we have re-sort of taught them and reminded them about the expectations, things like that. The second part of it is if we provide frequent, authentic, positive reinforcement, we will help foster positive relationships with our students and reinforce expected behaviors. So we have a Road Runner raffle, which the PTO generous sports and staff, it could be teachers, could be cafeteria staff, can be custodians, can be anyone, can give a student a raffle ticket for an act of kindness, for meeting a positive expectation, for going above and beyond. It can be for a lot of different things. And we have, you know, raffle bins, and kids get excited about it. Once a month, we draw from there, three from each grade, win a prize. And they usually get a choice of a gift certificate to Muya or somewhere. So that has been really, really helpful. I think the third thing is that we really do believe that if we provide in-the-moment classroom support, we can help students remain in the classroom and prevent behaviors. And we know that they should be in the classroom learning. So we implemented CAT this year, Classroom Assistance Team. And I would say we've had some success with it, but we have some work to do with it. So we have devices where teachers can send a chat that requests support in it, like it would say, "212", and it might put a student's first initial. Or it might just put, like, "Room 101, 1:30 today". So it could be like a proactive call for, like, again, an extra set of hands. Or it could be like an in-the-moment before a student is making a mistake. If a student appears dysregulated or is having a hard time settling in, we do believe if we can get another adult, sometimes it's just a different adult, and it could be a counselor, it can be one of us, there are a lot of people who it could be, that we can prevent some of these things from happening. And we have had some successes with it. We have had a couple of issues with the technology, so we're gonna be working on that over the summer. But in the meantime, we have had people just call the office and say, "CAT, room 101". Rather than sending a kid out or calling about a student, you're able to get in there at times before a student is not able to sort of control him or herself. So that's been, you know, something that we would like to explore more. So we've got some work to do there. But those are kind of three things that we think that if we can focus on them and we can continue to improve those, that, you know, we're excited about next year. The other thing that we are doing is revisiting alternative remedies. And what that means is alternatives to suspension, which I'm gonna talk about in a little while. So what we know is that suspension does not help students make better choices in the future. But we also know there's a lot of data out there that shows that. What we also know is that the state of Massachusetts only supports suspensions in certain extreme cases, that there has been a huge push. It's very connected to kids' mental health and kids' feelings about school, that schools don't suspend kids unless they're in a really extreme situation. So we have a lot of alternatives to suspension. We know that sometimes kids do still need to be suspended, and there are specific things that we do suspend for. But we have been working on alternatives to suspension. I added our cellphone grant update here, because we do believe that cellphone use, social media impacts kids' behavior. We have met with some schools that have some pretty interesting data that shows some correlations. So we've included that here as part of this, of one of our next steps. So some alternatives to suspension, I'll talk about in a minute. Those are on the left. But I think one of the things that's important for all of us to remember when we think about students and behavior is that the, that behavior is a form of communication for students in that developmentally, our students are all over the place. I think in terms of their ability to follow rules, in terms of their ability to make good choices in the moment, we know their brains are still developing. We know that sixth graders and seventh graders have different sort of capacities for self-regulation, for example, than a second grader. So I think that our belief is that behavior is a form of communication. And if a student could say, "Here's what I need", the student would. When they can't, sometimes they either act out or they may act in. So we know that this is the case. We know it's true of adults as well. We just, our brains are more formed, and we're generally more able to get there more quickly. So when I get home and I'm annoyed and I'm upset with my husband, it's really not about him usually. And so I, my brain is formed, and within a few minutes, I can say, "Listen, I'm stressed out about X, Y, or Z, not taking it out", but kids are not there, and we recognize that. So our job, in terms of sort of managing behavior and discipline and responding, is to really help them develop those skills and to understand what causes them sometimes to not meet the adults' expectations. So the goal is always to work with students, families, teachers, and counselors. And sometimes it's outside counselors, sometimes it's counselors in school. But to help kids really own whatever their behavior is, whether it's physical and they whacked a student, whether it's they got too rough and aggressive outside at Brain Break, playing soccer, whether it's talking back to an adult, whatever that behavior is, the first step is always to help them own it. Sometimes kids in the moment cannot own it, and we know that. So we need to give them time to decompress, to re-regulate. We also know that students who struggle with emotional issues, with mental health issues, there's a lot of things that impede kids' ability to really kind of decompress and own a mistake. For some students, it takes a day or more. And we, as the adults, just need to get to know kids well enough so that we understand when we will get there with students. It's different for all kids. So that's part of our work. Another part of our work is to help kids recognize what motivates that behavior. So if a student knows that when I go into a classroom and I have a substitute teacher, I tend to get myself in trouble. Like, that is something that motivates behavior. We have to help them understand that and either find a way for them to maybe not enter the class right away or help them sort of navigate that. So our job, once they can own their behavior, is to sort of help them recognize why. Why did I do that? Oftentimes, there are reasons that have nothing to do with school at all. My parents are in a fight at home. My mother was upset with the outfit I wore to school today. The things that we hear from kids when we take the time to talk and listen to them, it can help us understand sort of what motivates them sometimes to not follow our expectations and to not be respectful, to not sit and do what we ask them to do. So our job is to sort of get to this point where we can then help them control that. So, you know, kids who don't, you know, they don't have a snack mid-morning, they can get hangry, and they will tell you that. So our job, again, these are sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. We know it's a transitional time for them. Their brains are still very much developing, is to kind of work through a process with them. And then also to help adults who work with these students understand what motivates some of the behavior. So if you're a teacher working in a classroom, obviously, and you're trying to teach 20 students, and one or two kids are dysregulated or maybe not doing what they're supposed to or maybe being disrespectful in that moment, it's not always easy for the adult to sort of understand that and respond to that. So it's our job to kind of help all of the adults who work with kids understand that each of these kids is still forming. Each of these kids' brains is not developed. And there are a lot of things that impact how they present and how they are or are not able to meet our expectations. And I think finally, finding important ways to connect with students and make them feel like they belong is really important. I think it can, we can alienate kids unintentionally when they don't meet our expectations. And I think it's incumbent upon the adults who work with kids to really make sure that we don't forget that these are children, these are individuals with individual needs, and we can get them there. So we do believe that all of our kids, we can get there. I think it's just important to sort of keep our belief in mind and then kind of our goal in mind. So a lot of, there's a lot of different kinds of things that we can do besides suspend kids. So the data that I showed about the suspensions around the physical stuff, it's likely that these four mentioned in 21, 22, these nine, and then these eight this year, do not encompass any physical activity that happened at school. It happens that a kid shoves a kid, another kid shoves another kid. We don't necessarily suspend them, especially if they're just friends and they're fooling around, and it gets a little out of control. Or they're out playing basketball, somebody boxes somebody out too hard, another kid gets upset. So there are physical things that happen, and kids don't get suspended. It doesn't mean we don't intervene, it just means, you know, they're not suspended. So this is kind of a list of some of our alternatives to suspensions. I mean, they're kind of basic, you know, a lot of things that you would think of. We can take away privileges, like if you play in a sport or something like that. We can, you know, suspend them from the team or something like that. We do talk a lot with parents and guardians. We meet a lot with families to try to help understand what's going on. I think restorative work is really important for students. If there is an issue in a classroom, for example, and there's an issue, then it's kind of easy to not have to revisit that issue. What's a lot harder is to have to own the mistake and sit with the teacher and a counselor and say, "Look, I'm sorry, I was rude. Here's what was going on for me, I understand". It's a lot harder to actually do that than to just be sent out of class. So we try to help them kind of restore and repair relationships. Something that we've implemented this year, which has been really great, is what's called the Structured Day. And this is, there's a lot of different ways, I think, that you can do this. But Gretchen and I, along with our behavior specialist, attended a conference in September. And this was one of the things that we were like, "Oh, let's try that". So rather than suspend a student, which is, you know, send them home, and in some ways, that's not a consequence, or even internally suspend them, this keeps them learning and it keeps them in the classroom. So for some students, a structured day is that they are escorted from class to class. They're left in class, but they have an adult, you know, trailing somewhere nearby to help them remember that they made a mistake and that somebody is kind of paying attention. For other kids, it may be that, but the person may stay in class with them and sort of help in the classroom, but maybe that adult needs to be a different presence. Usually, if kids are on a structured day, and these are customized for the kids, they will eat lunch in the office. That is a social time for them here, and we'll take that away. But again, every student is a bit different. Families have been very supportive of this as an option for students. I think, you know, again, there are a lot of different kinds of things that we do. We certainly meet with students, we educate them, maybe during lunch or before or after school, on whatever the mistake was that they made. So I think there are a lot of different kinds of things that we try with kids. We are always looking for different kinds of ways that we can respond when students do make mistakes. At this point, I think Christine and Jen Robo and Gretchen are gonna talk a bit about the cellphone work that we've done this year and the grant. I know I meant, I talked about this earlier in the year about the grant that we received, right?
Yes.
Great.
Yeah, so one of the things we were working on over the summer is that we were thinking about cellphone use at the middle school. And we were able to get some grant money from the DESE. So it took us until January, but by January, we were able to pull together a Malachin staff committee. We had a nice sort of array of different people from different parts of the school, different disciplines who were, you know, able and willing to join. I was on the committee, as were Jen Robo and Christine Masid, along with some other people. We've met now six times between January and May. And we did, we're work, we're still a work in progress. You know, we've not made decisions, but we're really thinking about a lot of different options here. So one of the things that we did is we polled staff to, and just simply asked, you know, among other things, you know, how many, who in the group believes that cellphone use at Malachin is what we called a problem? And 82% of staff responded by saying that they consider it to be a problem. One of the things that it's actually happening this week is we asked eighth-grade science teachers to work with their students around collecting some cellphone data. So they talked to their teachers about what kinds of interruptions, what's happening with their cellphone during the course of a school day. And so one of the things they're gonna be working on, actually, at the end of this week, is they're just gonna have their cellphone out and just really collect data around how many alerts they get, what sorts of things, what's happening with their phone during the class time, during a specific amount of time. They're gonna collect some data and kind of look at that. As adults, members of the committee, we've done a few different things. We've been in touch with some local schools, just to kind of get a sense of what's going on in other places, trying to think about different options that they're using in other schools around, you know, storage places for cellphones, kind of rules or procedures that students have. And then we did a couple of school visits. So I went to Whitcomb Middle School in Marlborough, where they're using the Yonder pouches. So Yonder is a company that is selling these sort of, they're magnetic, they're pouches that have a magnet closure. Students put their phones and any other devices, the smartwatches or the AirPods, into the pouch, and they keep them in there locked up for the school day. And then on their way out of the building, they go to kind of giant magnet unlock, and then they're able to use their cellphone. So for their walks home or rides home or whatever, they're able to use it before and after school. Sorry. Jen and Michelle went to Krista McCalliff, the charter school in Framingham. They can talk a little bit about that as well. It's another school that's using the Yonder pouches. And again, we're still working on this, but it's been a lot, it's been a pretty interesting experience. So I don't know if you, anybody else wants to speak to our work?
Well, I'd probably start, I guess, Michelle, and you can talk about the meeting. But we, I wanted to kind of see how the students went about doing, like, how it all worked. And I think the best thing was the visit and seeing how they handle it and what their opinion was of the pouches. And Michelle will probably talk more about the data, but just to watch the kids walk in, and, you know, they have a whole routine that goes. The kids are, they expect it when they walk in. They know exactly what they're doing. And every place that we've talked to and all of the reading that we've done, it's been a game changer for the schools. The, a lot of the problems that come with the cellphones, and we know that our kids' brains are not fully developed yet. And, you know, so they're always thinking about that. Like, who's texting me? Who's posting on social media? My mom is texting me. And there's always something, even when the phones are not on them. And this kind of just separates it for them, where they can focus more on the classroom and what the task at hand. They, every school that we've talked to, and again, all the reading we've done, it's just been a game changer. And, you know, just looking at this and being in the classroom and seeing the issues that come with the cellphones, it was pretty exciting to watch how engaged the kids were in the whole process. And so Michelle and I met with the principal at Krista McCalliff. Obviously, it's a smaller environment than we have here. But she was able to, we, when we sat with her, and Michelle can talk about it, but it was, a lot of the problems that we see with the cellphones, they also were seeing. And then she described, so Michelle, if you wanna talk about that.
Yeah, I think it is just interesting to see what options are there. And when we did meet with the principal at Krista McCalliff, they have about 340 students, I think, so smaller than we are. But what she said was, the data that was striking to her was that office referrals for discipline were... office referrals for discipline were reduced by seventy-five percent in the time that they had the pouches, and suspensions were reduced by fifty percent. And she just said that it wasn't about the actual phone and what they were doing with it. It was just kind of everything that went with it. So I think it was, it was interesting to talk with her. It has certainly been, you know, I'm not on the committee, but I've been sort of part of some of this. And I think, you know, there are a lot of different options besides a Yonder pouch. And, and, but I think it's, it's an interesting option, and I think we are still trying to figure out what we want to do.
Yeah, and we, and we still have work to do around, you know, getting in touch with our families and thinking about sort of the big picture, but just to sort of give you a, a sense of where we are right now with the, with the progress on our, our committee.
That was kind of a lot, sorry.
I just have, since we're on the Yonder pouch topic, did, did anybody talk to the students or the, the parents of the students to see what, how they feel about the Yonder pouches?
So I can speak with, so the Krista McAuliffe School, we talked with kids who were coming in, and as you can imagine, you know, some of the kids were like, yep, it's great, I don't even think about it, and I was just kind of part of how we do business. Couple of them were like, oh, this is stupid. You know, that's kind of their response, which is kind of a typical middle school response. I think, what, we didn't speak with the families there, but what the principal said is that, if it's something you're going to move toward, there's a lot of education way beforehand. And there are a lot of questions around, you know, security and all these other things. They can be cut open pretty easily if there was ever an emergency. So the kids keep them with them, they're just kind of locked up. So I think that, you know, she has a lot of things that she can share with us about kind of how those next steps went and how the parents felt about it. She said she has maybe one student that has like an alternative, his is Velcroed. So we can get into it, there's a reason for that. I think he has a health issue. So I think there are ways to accommodate if there are, if there are needs like that. But again, we, we haven't made a decision, but I think we're just trying to kind of explore and see. And I think that, you know, we would be, you know, reaching out to families before we did anything, but this is kind of where we are right now.
I'll start, Danan?
So I guess my, my question is kind of twofold. Just in general, in regards to the either bullying or fighting activity, as well as the, the technology aspect of trying to remove the phones as a distraction. Understanding that there is incentive to be set for students to just say abstinence from an activity, whether it's engaging with social media or physical violence with however mild with their colleagues, versus our opportunity to then teach in real time conflict resolution and an increase in media literacy. I'm just wondering, like, is there an approach that comes at this thing from both sides that isn't just relying on it going away? But, you know, I think about even just, and I know Melikan has debate, and like there are other forms of engagement where conflict can be simulated that can lead to either resolution and/or just an acting out of, sometimes there is no resolution. Or with the phones, that like, there is going to be a point where we're not going to lock these things up for you. When you do engage with them, how are you going to do so intelligently? So I guess that's.
I think, so a couple of things. We definitely do work with kids around like their social media presence and all of that. In our self-class, for sure, there are structured lessons that are, you know, second step lessons. So they are, they're good lessons. Now, in real, how does that play out? So we have students that, you know, things happen outside of school on social media over the weekend, but they bring them into school because they all go to school together. So then we become sort of part of the solution at that point. So it's a bit reactive at that point because stuff has already happened. So at that point, that's when we are spending a lot of time with families, with students. Sometimes the school resource officer, if we need to, just to help them understand that the severity of whatever you put out there. So, you know, I think when the conflict on social media happens or, or between kids, you know, on cellphones, that is a reactive kind of a thing that we're doing because they're not supposed to be on them during the day anyway. So it, it sort of gets carried in. So yes, there's some, you know, digital literacy work. I think there's more we could do. I also think that, that there's an opportunity to work with families at large to sort of help them understand. I think usually when we end up responding to things, families have no idea what their kids are actually doing online and sort of what it all looks like. So I think that it feels sometimes like we are flying the plane and building it. You know, we're trying to help these families with kids whose brains are not developed. And these kids who are kind of getting into things online, not even during school, to try to kind of help them sort of, sort of figure that out. So I think those are good questions. I think that there's a lot of work to be done.
And I'll, I'll just add that some of that safety sort of aspect and education about almost like the health side and the mental health side is also in some of our other standards around the digital literacy and computer science standards and in our new comprehensive health and PE standards. And so that is starting before middle school. And that work is kind of woven in. So it's also kind of a bigger conversation before they necessarily even have cellphones in their hands.
But Bryce, I think your question is a good question. Is, is it that we just don't allow access? And therefore, they're not learning how to manage these tools and resources? Or do we allow access and set guidelines and boundaries? So I think that those are the questions that we're grappling with. But the research is pretty compelling that not having devices in school improves the sense of belonging to students. And then oftentimes, students with cellphones out are wondering, I wonder if they're texting. I wonder, am I part of this group? I wonder, there's a, there's a self-consciousness that happens as a result of this cellphone usage that really is counterproductive to the sense of belonging we're trying to develop in our schools.
I think even the idea that like, middle school kids can tussle just sometimes like a, a hard box out, like that's a perfect example of just like something that can happen and it leads to two friends, you know, just kind of going at each other for a bit. And I guess I just wonder like, and I'm glad to hear that we're not then just suspending any kind of activity like that, or we're moving in a disciplinary format that would follow a child around, but the opportunity to just then kind of teach and educate, not just the students, and maybe there's some work for us to do at, at the family level. The idea that like, that doesn't mean that that person isn't a good person. You guys had a thing, that, that you had a disagreement, you had a conflict. It, it worked itself through. Yeah, maybe it's avoidance, but also maybe it's just respect and tolerance, you know. Like, and, yeah, so anyways, that's where my head is.
Uh, thank you for being here. And I didn't catch your name at the end. I know it's Jen, right?
Christine, Christine Masid.
Okay, thank you. And you're part of the CAT team?
No, the cellphone committee.
Oh, the cellphone committee, yeah, thank you so much. Um, so I think, I mean, we've covered a lot. I mean, it's like layers of an onion, right? But really important conversation. I have, I have a lot. I'm going to try to just pare it down to a couple of things. So I'm curious if your work with lagging skills, you know, seeing, okay, this behavior is a form of communication. What skills don't these students have in order to, you know, prevent that behavior in, in the, in the future? I'm sort of, what's the work with that? And is there a correlation with the second step curriculum? So I guess I'll just start with that.
So a couple of things. I would say that students who are identified as having some of the lagging skills that you're talking about, so they may be on dyskinesia or fibroforensia or something like that, those things are explicitly worked on, yes. I think there is work for us to do as a school around everybody else. Because what we know is that there are skilled, there are skill deficits that we have to help them with. So I think that is part of our explicitly teaching them, but really focusing on the specific skill that, that is lagging. So there isn't direct instruction, at least whole schools. Certainly, they get some of that through second step work, but not whole school at this time.
And, and I know that, you know, Melikan Middle School is not the only school having behavior issues. It's, it's everywhere nationwide. So I think this is a conversation happening in a lot of, of buildings. So I guess from there, I'm thinking about these students and what's, social skills maybe they lacked and didn't get during the pandemic, and thinking about their developmental age, right, at that time. And I'm sure those conversations are going on, but that was just some things that sort of came into my head. And then I thought that the, the classroom support, the, the CAT team was really interesting. Sounds like it's sort of a, a step in trying to figure out how can we support students without removing them from the classroom? Are there any times when students then, you know, the support in the classroom is not effective? And then what, what happens after that?
Yeah, so I think we hope we catch it before then, obviously. And so, but yeah, sometimes another adult in the room, another adult who knows the kid in the room or maybe doesn't know, depending on the situation, one or the other could work better. I think there are times when it's not effective. And so maybe the student needs to leave and go for a walk, maybe the student needs to spend some time with a counselor, but it, it doesn't necessarily mean you get a detention or you get a, something punitive. It, it just means that even with that support, it's not enough to help the student regulate and not make a, a, a bad choice. So we hope we can prevent it, but it doesn't always happen. And then there are other things. And it may be that we have to take a break, you know, we may have to go to the office and just call home and just talk about what's happening, you know. So we just try to figure out what's going on and what's motivating the behavior, so that we can hopefully help with it.
So I think what would be helpful for the school committee is, you know, having, after the school year ends, having that reflection on, how did CAT, what does it stand for, Classroom Assistance Team? How did that work in the middle school? What needs to change? What needs to improve? So that in the fall, as we start a budget discussion, if there's any resources, professional development supports, we know, and, and we can help assist you. One, one person that came into mind for professional development is, I think it's Jessica or Jennifer Minahan?
Yeah, Jessica.
Okay, so you've had her, okay. She literally changed my life. Just her PD is amazing.
Yeah, it is.
We can have her back.
Yeah, we'd love to have her again. It's, it's good. Yeah, she's great.
And then I'm curious if you have reached out to any other districts like you did for cellphones on just practices that have worked well in other districts?
In terms of.
Um, behavior and support in the classroom.
Um, so we've worked with Trattier and Algonquin right now, just to sort of calibrate in district because I think we're kind of all over the place with sort of, you know, responses and sort of proactive work. And I think we have a lot to learn from each other. So one of our steps, one of our next steps this summer is to connect with other districts and other schools. I think, you know, the discussion about student behavior, you know, I don't subscribe to the, the notion that kids are worse. I think they're just different than they were. And I think every, we could say that ten years ago, we could say it ten years before that. So the data that we look at, you know, and even in the survey, it's very flat. I mean, for the most part, you know, and other things too. So I think it's different behavior. The kids' needs are different. The society we live in is different. So I think with that comes the need for the adults to be different. And so I think it's just understanding that so that we can find a way to support these kids as they're navigating.
I do have one more question.
Can I just make one comment, Lauren, about kind of our tier one SEL curriculum, second step? So I think that is about skill building in this specific area. And this is our, we, we're building coherence. So as students move from first grade to second grade and eventually get to the middle school, there is language that they have learned and have heard and used that's been consistent across their elementary experience and will, they'll use at the middle school level. I think that's really powerful. And I think we're, we're starting to see the benefits of the second step program. And I think it will only be more impactful when students have multiple years of that tier one intervention.
And then I guess my last thing is, when any incident behavior, whether it be minor or major, occurs, it would be interesting to see what the trends are of sort of what happened prior to, to cause that. Is it something coming from outside typically? Is it something happening in the classroom or the hallways? Because I think that data would help the district just plan for, for these sort of things. So that was just something else. And then, yeah, it's, it's just, it's just a hard balance, right? These kids are developing. So we want to support these, these children who are trying to navigate this messy world. But we also want to make sure that learning is happening in the classroom, that everyone's getting a positive educational experience. So I really think that we're making some positive steps. Hopefully soon, maybe not this time next year, but maybe sometime in the fall, we can meet again and then sort of see what the, sort of where we're, where we're going from there. So thank you.
Sounds great.
You know. Thank you for this presentation. Besides, I'm not going to repeat everything that everyone said because I think it's wonderful steps that you're doing, but the one that I really liked was the structured day. Because I remember teaching in the middle school and getting an email or a text or a phone call in the morning, this student is going to be in the office for in-school suspension, send work down. So then you're going, okay, what can I do this student can do independently? And I think what you just said about the students still being followed, if it needs some assistance with a staff member or in there. By doing your structured day, the kid is still having the rich learning of the teacher, is having the interaction with the students. If students are sharing projects or, or sharing pedagogies or anything like that, they're still getting the rich thing instead of just doing pen and paperwork just to keep them busy. And their minds are, are going to wander when they do in, in class, in-school suspension in the office. So thank you very much for that. First of all, I'd like to thank the superintendent because he sends out, and Cheryl Lepary, they send out the linked agenda on a Friday before Wednesday. So when I looked at it, I said, what piques my interest? And right away, it was your discipline data. I'm like, what's happening? So when I looked at it and, and I read about the part about the cellphones, and I said, hmm, what's a Yonder, Yonder?
Yonder, yeah.
Yonder pouch. And I went, okay, that sounds really good. Okay, you're going to get a grant and, okay, that's really good. Well, the next day, on national CBS morning, or it's Sunday, I don't know which one it was, they start talking about cellphones. So it really piqued my interest because it was Dr. Jonathan Hadd who wrote this book called The Anxious Generation. So I went, this is great. I can make this connection between what's going to be on the agenda. And Monday morning, I go to the superintendent's office to write his evaluation, the composite, along with Kathleen Polachko, who is the former regional chair. So I thought I was going to be, I'm hot now, right? So I just go in and say, I saw this and this book calls the Anx- Greg finishes my sentence. He goes, it's the anxious generation. Kathleen Polachko, to my right, pulls out of her bookcase the actual book. And I'm like, oh my gosh, we're all on the same page. In the meantime, I had gone on to the CWMars to get the book, okay? And I was likely to get one that's left and it's coming in from Amesbury. I couldn't even get the audiobook because there's three hundred and thirty-two people on the waitlist for twenty-nine. And for the ebook, there's a hundred and seventy-four people that are waiting on for sixteen copies. So I'm really lucky. I can't wait till I get, your book is here. But what I wanted to mention to you is that one of the things that Jonathan says here is that in the book, he lays out four reforms or new norms that would provide a foundation for a healthier kind of childhood in the digital age. Each norm helps parents and teens escape the social trap they find themselves in. No teen wants to be the only one who does not have a smartphone and social media, and no parent wants to socially isolate their child. He comes up with four norms, and one of them is a phone-free school. Now, I don't know exactly what's in the book, but if the superintendent knows about it, if another school community member already has the book that I don't have, I can't wait till I dwell into this book. So besides the book, he also has a free website that you can go on to. I haven't done that yet. But what I would like to, not so much because I can't really propose it, but somehow I'd like to give you this information that I downloaded. And if there is a possibility, because I'm the liaison to the Northborough Ed Foundation, I would love to assist you in writing a grant. I'll do the busy work. Give it to me. I'm retired. I can do it. But I want to help. If you don't want to do the book, that's fine. But I was thinking, you have PTOs, you have your school council, even if you wanted to have it in the staff, and if it's worthwhile, we could also share those books with Southborough. I know it's not under my preview to say this, but I'm just offering that, maybe look at this book and see what it has. Go online. And if you think it's worthwhile, I'll help you to write the grant from Northborough. So I'm going to pass this over to you. Thank you to the two of you who are working on this. And I didn't make multiple copies, but I'm sorry.
Joan is excited.
I get so. Did I get excited? Can you tell?
I can tell you're excited about this.
I'm really excited about this. So, and I, I felt that I got the- So, and I, I felt that I got the, um, the positive reinforcement when the superintendent could finish my sentence and a regional school committee member already had the book. I tried to steal a bit, check, couldn't get it. So thank you very much. Be, be in contact if I can be of any assistance in writing the grant.
Thank you. Kristin, do you have anything?
Yeah, I guess I'll start with the cell phone stuff since we're kind of on that. Um, touching on Johnson, one of the things I was going to say is it is really hard as a parent when you're trying to avoid the cell phone, the social media, and then it sort of becomes this reverse stigma. And the kids are getting made fun of because they don't have a phone. And one of only like four people in my grade has, has, has a phone. And that was actually true, and I didn't, you know, realize that. Um, and, and the social media, the same thing. You're not on TikTok or something. And so I really, um, I'm excited about the idea of sort of having them away for the day because I think that just takes that all gone, right? Like, so you're not the kid left out because you're not allowed, because your parents are trying to, you know, keep those things away from you that you don't know how to use yet. Um, and so I, I was interested with the yonder pouches. I guess at least one teacher in the school uses, um, what she calls a cell phone hotel, which I think is a great idea. I think she gives raffle tickets to the kids too.
She gives those little tickets, those.
The roadrunner tickets, right? When she puts them away because it's voluntary.
That's why Addie wanted a phone so she could.
Yeah.
So she wanted a phone so she could get the ticket by putting it in twice a day.
Oh, yeah, I got the same thing, yeah.
That was part of the points, like.
Part of the, the argument. Uh, but I think it's great that she does that because then at least while they're in her class, right? It's totally away. It's not sitting there on your desk or in your pocket and they're trying to sneak it out. And I teach college students, I see it all the time, and it's always a waiver of me. Do I call them out? But I don't really want to embarrass them. But, you know, then I've had kids take a call in my class and I'm like, I'm standing here. I just ignored my mother on my smartwatch and you're talking to who over there? Yeah, like, uh, it was so, uh, it's great if, if we can find a way for them to be sort of somewhere in the building, safe. And I know it's a huge challenge, but I really appreciate the work that you're all putting into this. I know it's, it's hard and it's complicated. And I was curious about the, the eighth graders collecting data that you mentioned. I'm sorry if I missed this, but is there, when do you think you'll have that data? And when were you thinking about processing it? I'd love to see what, what the eighth graders thought about cell phones.
Yeah, so the eighth grade science teachers started the conversation. Um, they set up a data table and they were sort of asking, you know, what kinds of alerts do you get during the day? So they, they sort of started with that and ESPN and, you know, the, the different. But then also they talked about and shared with their teachers, you know, we use Canvas here at Melikan. So they're getting Canvas updates. Anytime a teacher puts in a grade and, you know, so then that's a distraction. You know, you're in science, but you're thinking about your ELA test grade that you didn't do well on and thinking about, so it's, you know.
Or their mom gets it and then they, mom texts at the same time. So it's like yay or.
It's later, yes.
Right, right.
Everybody out there watching.
Bing, bing, bing on the phone.
So, so anyway, that, that's sort of where they were. And, and they're looking at the end of this, it may even start tomorrow. Um, it's just timing wise, it makes sense for them to spend class time the next couple of days working on it. So, yeah, we, we, as soon as we have that, we can, we're happy to share it. Um, because we, we thought, you know, we feel it's important for the, the students to be a part of this. And I think eighth grade is a, you know, they won't be back next year, but I think, you know, we can get some honest assessments from them. Um, and, uh, you know, so it's, it's interesting. But yes, for sure, we'll share that.
Yeah, no, thank you. Cause yeah, I, I have looked a little into The Anxious Generation. I saw him on TV actually in a couple, there's been some debates about that book. But then, um, also some kids who were eighth, ninth or a little older who were saying, actually, I don't think I should have had social media as early as I did, you know, reflecting back and saying, that wasn't a good decision, mom, you know? Um, it didn't have, have such a great effect. So that would be really great information, yeah, interesting to have from them. Um, I'm going to jump backwards, I guess, over to this data. Um, with the, the suspensions, I was wondering if you could explain a little more when you get into, you know, something, a physical aggression that's been nice and reported, right? And now I assume there's some sort of investigation. How do you determine what happened? Does it merit a suspension? Is it a back and forth, like, or was somebody defending themselves or? Uh, just explain, if you could explain a little more about that process in general. Um, and also if the survey data, which is anonymous, right? Makes sense to you or seems reasonable based on the actual like suspension and discipline data that you see in school?
Sure. Yes, sure. Um, so I think that there was a shift, um, last fall, so fall of 2022, where the, um, discipline, uh, regulations for the state really shifted to move us away from suspension as much as we could unless it involves, um, controlled substance, assault on a staff member or weapon. Those are the three big ones that you can automatically suspend for. Everything else, you're supposed to try alternative remedies whenever possible. Now, in terms of physical, you know, things, certainly like there's, um, language in the statute around, um, if it's like repeated, something like that. So an example of something physical that would be repeated that might warrant a suspension, let's say, um, there are students that rough house in the hallway and we're constantly telling them to like knock it off. Um, you know, they're like shoving into people, uh, it starts friendly, it's fun, you know, they're buddies, but then they start shoving into other kids, right? And then sometimes, so maybe we've given them sort of like a warning, maybe we've given them another warning. Uh, maybe this time they, someone has actually fallen, right? So then they end up in the office, we'll call home, there'll be some kind of progression, you know, about what the next step is. Um, and we're really clear with them, you're going to eat lunch in the office today. And the next time we hear about something like that, you know, we're going to, it'll be like, uh, you'll have an after-school detention, whatever. Um, and then the next day, the same kid like shoves a friend, the friend shoves him back. They end up then in a fight. Those two kids are probably at that point going to be suspended. The one in particular, we've been trying to work with along the way, he hasn't gotten the message. Now he's gotten in a fight with his friend, they're both crying, one of them, you know, whatever. So in that case, probably both of those kids are going to be suspended, but it depends. Are they in sixth grade? Are they in eighth grade? Have we been on this journey longer? Are they in sixth grade and, and really like this is the first kind of thing for this other kid? So do they have an IEP? Are they on a five or four plan? Um, what do we know about these kids? Who knows these kids best? Um, so it is in some ways subjective and very student-based. Um, so there are other sorts of things, so that's kind of like an example. There's another example, let's say two kids, like we had this happen earlier this year. They were posturing with each other, they literally got into a fight in the hallway. They just were like pushing, shoving, and end up being hit, 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 whatever. When we finally split them up, they both came into the office, they both got suspended. Um, those two kids were new to the school this year. Um, they were sixth graders. And so we, we, I think suspended them internally each for a day, right? Maybe two days, I can't remember. Um, anyway, the point is if that same exact thing had happened with eighth graders, both of those kids probably would have been externally suspended. So you really kind of have to weigh a lot of things. Um, you have to think about a lot of different things before you suspend a student, even for physical stuff. So I think, I don't know that I answered your question, but I think that there are a lot of things that, that we have to consider before we make that decision. Does it impact other kids? Um, are they a threat to other kids' safety? Are they a threat to themselves? Are, you know, there are a lot of like little checkboxes that we kind of go through.
Yep, and I guess the other thing I was wondering, um, before I get on to the next slide, um, that when you look at the survey data, and I, thank you for the comparisons too with yellow boxes, and that was helpful. Um, overall, and I know you said you want to dig more into it, and there's definitely follow-up questions, uh, but does it seem to make sense to you? Or do you look at that and say like, that's not what I see, like what's happening?
Um, I think what's tricky is when I look at, again, in a physical fight on school property over the last 12 months, that's the very last thing. And we see almost 5% of kids say yes. Two years ago, about 3% said yes. And you put numbers to that, right? Out of 500. Um, again, my follow-up questions, which are not covered in the survey, would be, is this during school hours? Is it during the school year? Or are we just talking about on school prop? You know, that is, I would want to ask all those questions before I made like a, like, no, we don't have that many fights at school.
Right.
We haven't.
Yeah.
And I would add that this is one snapshot in time.
Yep.
And it is that triangulation of here's the, the Metro West data, here's our data in our school, here's our anecdotal data, and triangulation to be able to say, is this?
We're not an outlier.
We're an outlier, you know?
And it's self-reported, so it's how students interpret.
So you're saying self-reporting, they're saying 5%, but you're saying it's less than 5% for your knowledge, for staff knowledge.
Right, like those suspension numbers don't equal 5% of our.
Right. Suspension, but that's not saying suspended for, that's just saying fighting. So you're either not seeing it or it's happening like as you said, on non-school time.
Or a student reads that, again, if I look at the sixth graders.
Or the interpretation of it is not what.
It could be ever. I think it's just, so if I look over there, I see that sixth grader, so we had had them in this building for what, since November? So for a couple of months, 5% of them had been in a fight on school property in the past 12 months. That means that many kids in the, the last year had gotten in a fight between November of fifth grade and November of sixth grade. So Paisley, Lincoln, Zee saw that many kids. Do you see what I'm saying? So it doesn't, it doesn't match up to me. Um, is it that, you know, did I get in a fight with my friend? Yeah, I got mad, I whacked him, he whacked me back. Maybe I say that's funny, you know, I don't know. So no, I, I think it's, what does that mean, a fight? I don't know what it means. I think those are some of the questions, so no. And this number 14.6% over their lifetime had gotten into a fight. And again, if I look over here, sixth graders, more sixth graders in their lifetime as of November of 2023 had been in a fight than seventh and eighth graders? I mean, that's where, on school property, that's a lot. If you, if you think about that, so, you know.
Well, you said the interpretation is a big piece of it.
Yeah.
What they're saying, but I.
Kids make sense to that question. It's certainly the way the kids report it. You know, I think it's like with any kind of data, kids report being bullied, for example, right? What does that mean to them?
Sure.
Does it mean this? Does it mean this? So I think that's why it, this is good data. I think it's important data to consider. Um, I think that, you know, we have other data, and there's certainly ways that we can take different kinds of data too as we're working with kids, I think, that could be helpful. Um, and might flesh this out even a little bit more for us. Um, but again, I think it's, it's, it's important for us to look at.
I think we also have to think about how, when we look at, they get this data a little more that we just got on Monday. We looked at it and 95% of students feel safe at school. So when we look, you know, we need to look at all the data and not just one little piece of it. This is just one piece of a lot of data.
Mm-hmm, yep. Um, yeah, if, if we're coming back in the fall, to me that fall, it'd be great to see the other surveys that you talked about and the next steps, like the school culture survey, going out to all students and all that other stuff, which are great next steps, um, that you had listed, um, in, in one of the later slides. Um, the roadrunner raffle is great as well, I love the positive. And I think, but with the, the shift to remedy rather than suspension is a great one. Um, we tried to do sort of the same thing at my school about academic disciplines. Um, not quite there, but you guys have some, I love all these strategies and alternatives to suspensions and steps that you can take because everything you've said is 100% correct, right? Like they're trying. Um, somebody said to me one time, like, it's not that your teenager is trying to give you a hard time, it's that they're having a hard time with something, right? And I am now the target of that, right? So I love that you guys are taking that approach and sort of trying to see what is it that you're struggling with? Not you're misbehaving, boom, punishment, right? Um, and, and all the different strategies that you have. Um, like the roadrunner raffle is great. It would be awesome if there were more ways to add to that positive reinforcement too. I don't know what those would be, or, you know, I'm sure, um, there would be some great things to add in there. Um, and I love the, the classroom assistance team, that one I wanted to highlight too. Usually the stories I hear about are students getting into minor altercations and either the teacher is probably overwhelmed with dealing with something else, overwhelmed with something. It's one person and what, 24 students in a room, right? So if they have that support or there's, um, a heightened responsiveness or they're given more tools in their belts, I think that, that's a great way to go. The way that you're heading is sort of giving that support so the teacher can interfere before student A slash student B because it started with something small. Um, those are all, I think you have awesome next steps here. Um, and sort of feeds into that positive behavior too, which you talked about, right? Feeding that positive relationship because you don't want the students to think the teacher doesn't care. Of course, the teacher cares. Um, the teacher's just one person now. Um, and so having those strategies and stuff is, is great, um, to help them. And I would second all the things Joan and everybody else said too. Cross those questions off my list. I'm finally done, it's finally your turn.
Um, well, thank you for everybody, um, and thank you. Um, I'm just gonna, I'll be quick, one thing I wanted to say, and you kind of touched upon it. You made a comment, something about, um, parents, something happening at home, parents not knowing, whatever. The one thing that I would love to see better at is the second step, better communication of what's going on in the buildings to the parents at home. Whether it be a site that they can click on and see what the lesson plan is, whatever. You ask your kid, what'd you do at school today? Nothing, fine, boring, this. You don't get what it is. And I feel like if parents see these lessons plans, see the topics, hear the topics, maybe they can talk about some of the stuff that they did, bring it up at home. You might have a stronger connection with the kids if they're getting the double reinforcement at home. Um, we started second step at our preschool that I work at, this year was the first time. And, um, they had a, a sheet we would send home weekly with it. I mean, we're in the digital age, I'm sure there's something online that you could send a link or something. But I just think that that might be something to help because I, I think that that, a lot of things you hear, it's like, wasn't my kid, my kid didn't do it, you know? Or, you know, I didn't know, they don't, they don't know this, you know? So if you, because I know, well, they do know this stuff because we've been teaching it. This is the stuff that's going on, like more accountability.
That's great, yeah, you can do that.
Otherwise, we're hitting the hour mark on this, which I don't think any of us anticipated, but it's a very important topic and I appreciate you coming in and pulling us together.
And thank you Christine and Jen and.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Now, some of you I don't think are leaving yet. I think some of you are staying for our next topic.
Yes, but if we can, um, if it's okay with the committee, ask our elementary principals if we want to begin their evening?
Oh, of course.
Oh, yes.
You didn't have to stay for any of this. I'm sorry. I thought. I, I thought you all knew that, as soon as you leave the table, go, run.
Take some cheese.
I'm so sorry, thank you so much for staying.
Some melted cheese. Some fondue.
Baked brie at the screen.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
So I feel bad, I didn't know they were waiting.
I think it was.
It was, I think they wanted to hear.
Okay.
I think it was.
They would have come.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. You know what? The temperature just dropped, I think, five degrees by. Is it cooler over there?
Yeah, notice keep going in and out.
Very interesting, very interesting. Um, okay, so moving right along, we are going to go on, on the update on Melikan Middle School's sixth grade ecology school overnight trip.
Sure. Um, so we, as everybody knows, we went to the, um, ecology school in Saco, Maine in November this year um, with our sixth graders for a two-night, um, experience. Uh, we hadn't been on a trip, I think in five years since, um, Stone Environmental School had closed down. Uh, the Stone Environmental School trip had been a tradition at Melikan for 14 or 15 years, and it was a shared experience with Trotter because they had done the same trip for about 30 years. So that was a nice tradition with both middle schools, as everybody knows. Um, when that shut down and then COVID hit, we hadn't found a replacement and, you know, our team leaders had been doing some research on possibilities. So this fall, we went to the ecology school in Saco, Maine. Trotter went to Nature's Classroom in Groton, Massachusetts. Our trip was a two-night, um, experience. Trotter's was a one-night experience. So since that time, um, we have been considering, um, returning to the ecology school and also gathering data to, to think about, is this the best option? As we're thinking about, um, not only for this coming year, but long-term. So we did survey, um, the staff who went to the ecology school to get their feedback. So we did survey, um, the staff who went to the ecology school to get their feedback. Uh, we did survey families of students who attended the ecology school this year to get feedback. We also surveyed, um, our incoming fifth grade families to see, you know, if we do this trip, basically, will you send your kid yes or no, or maybe you need more information, kind of a thing. So we looked at all the feedback. Um, there was a lot of really positive feedback. There's a lot of really good, um, constructive, you know, suggestions and ideas. Um, we also, in the meantime, had talked with the Trotter administration to sort of get their take on, on their experience. Um, so what we decided, um, based on all of that, was that we, we think long-term it makes sense that we have a shared experience with Trotter. And we want to try the, the experience that they had this year, which is the one-night trip to Nature's Classroom in Groton. Um, it is, we sort of came to this, you know, over several weeks, and I think, um, the likelihood of us taking a trip in the fall is slim. I think we are looking at the spring. But we are hoping, again, to move towards a parallel experience with Trotter like we had for many, many years with our sixth graders. So that's where we are at this point.
Yes, Lauren. Um, would Trotter and Melikan students be going at the same time?
The, the, um, I think, I can't remember the number Nature's Classroom holds. Um, I s- think, no, I think that we would have to go in two different groups, um, even from Melikan, based on the numbers that it would hold.
Okay.
So no, it wouldn't be, um, together.
And then, um, I know that one of our elementary schools, I believe Peaslee, does a fifth-grade trip to Nature's Classroom.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so have you had any conversations with Dr. Copley, just about any overlap or anything like that?
Yeah, they do the Nature's Classroom that is in Charlton, so it is a completely different location. So I think that that in itself is helpful. Um, so yeah, we have talked about that. Um, I think e- some of the feedback from our incoming fifth-grade families did say it seems a bit repetitive. And this is when they were thinking about the ecology school. Um, and they said we would, you know, we absolutely will send our child. It just seems that if there's a trip in the spring for fifth graders and one in the fall for sixth graders, that's a lot that are similar trips. So that was, you know, a couple of people did give us that feedback. So I do think, um, you know, I think it's a different group of kids. Um, I think it's, it's, we're going to try for the one overnight that Trotter is doing. Um, so, and I think if we do in the spring, that will help, and it is a different location, so.
And I think our thinking is that many students go to camp year over year. Like, they go to the sea, and there's actually some benefit of some of our students having familiarity with the trip and what to expect. Um, but we do not see it as, you know, they've already done it, so they, they're not gonna benefit from it. And it's really about the team building, a collaborative experience, um, getting to know their classmates and peers.
And will, um, I mean, I would assume the cost of the trip then would be substantially reduced, if it's, um, from two to one, one night?
Um, I think, um, the number that Trotter shared with us was two seventy-five for the one overnight, two full days. What we were looking at for next, for this coming fall, if we had continued with the ecology school, was like four fifteen.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Anybody else, anything before I say something? Joan?
I just have one thing. I think that, you know, the difference between the fourth grade and the fifth grade is the fourth grade has been with those students, you know, for five years. But yeah, when they come up here to Melikan, now they're forming new friendships from all the other schools. And I think the curriculum changes from year to year, because I went to Nature's Classroom in Charlton as a teacher, and every year it would, it seemed like the curriculum changed a little bit. And it's just the, the camaraderie and the community building that they do. So I would think that even though Peaslee does it at fifth grade, I think it's worthwhile experience at sixth.
I love the idea of having it in the springtime versus the fall, even though part of it, you're saying, it's just because planning, you can't pull it off typically. But I think you'll have much more engagement from the kids, and the kids will get more out of it. Um, I had a sixth grader this year, and a lot of it was anxiety about the trip. I don't know these people. I'm gonna be with these people, like, all this stuff. So at least, I mean, her friends that she had in the beginning of the school year, tell who she has now, are completely different. And she's really blossomed with more friends and things like that. So I really think it will be stronger, more beneficial for those types of kids. Also, I think having it be one night versus two, um, eases, eases its way into the anxiety too, um, for the kids. I mean, some of the kids never went away from their parents before, um, one night, remember, two nights. And, you know, it was a far distance, and to not have, you know, cellphone or any kind of connection to your kid, you know, for that period of time was, I think, anxiety for parents as well as some of the kids. So, um, I'm definitely in support of more exploration about that, so, that sounds good. Um, so, um, my question is, you're supposed to vote overnight trips.
Correct.
So how do we do that? Because I think you're supposed to do it like, like, a, a good chunk of time ahead of time.
So I think if we.
Do we make, vote to make an exception for this or something? Like, I don't know. I don't, I don't wanna go against our policy that says the amount of time that you're supposed to require.
Well, I thought it was some, a month or something, yeah.
Is it just thirty days?
I think our practices to do a year, but I think it's only thirty days.
Right, and that was more for planning, because it was like.
Yeah, that was, that was enough to get out, yeah, to get out in front of it for everybody.
So what is the potential solution, is we could have it on the first agenda in September? I mean, it's early in the month, and I'm sure we can iron out the details and see if we can book a date.
Yeah, our team leaders are in touch with them, so they have some potential dates. So, yeah, I would say by September, we would have those.
I gotta believe it's gonna be easier to find a teacher chaperones for one night versus two nights, too.
So I see another, that is another.
Another little perk, I'm sure.
That is another survey that we sent out.
Yeah, because I mean, that's the important thing, is you can't go anywhere without chaperones, so.
Yeah.
And also, I just wanted to mention, um, I think it's, I think it's really great that you're collaborating with Trotter. Um, just to, you know, parse this out and discuss. We talk a lot about how we are separate districts. However, you know, because we're regionalized at the high school, um, I think sometimes there's expectations that we do similar things, so this is a great shared experience, so.
I will say that, uh, I would say over the last five or six years, that has really, the relationship and the collaboration with Trotter has really, um, grown. Uh, it's much more consistent, and I think that is a lot in, a lot to do with Stephanie and Greg's leadership. So it's been, um, it's been really great and productive and healthy and helpful for everybody, so.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you taking the time tonight to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you guys tomorrow morning.
Have a good summer.
Have a good meeting tomorrow morning.
Uh, so no updates at this time?
Um, Northborough Cable Access Television.
So we do have, so we, um, I know the school committee is interested in looking at alternative locations for school committees.
I don't know. I like this heat. I don't know.
Oh, you do?
I do. I like the sun. I feel like I'm sweating it out.
Like improved quality of sound and audio, and just, um, I think, making sure it's accessible to everyone. So, um, I know that there has been some looking at Lincoln Street Cafeteria. And Dana Volk has been looking at how to outfit the cafeteria with the media, so it is seamless. Um, he, he shared with us an update, which I'd like to share. He's not able to join us this meeting. So currently, he's going through the, um, process for an RFP, the Request for Proposals, um, to put, uh, school AV projects, um, into the appropriate places. Um, he is getting quotes and is preparing to make a presentation before the Select Board for ARPA funding to support this project. Um, he shares that time is running out, so in terms of getting this done for the, the fall. Um, however, he strongly suggests that regardless of what happens with the media, that we move the school committee meetings, um, to the location at Mel- at Lincoln Street School. Um, and he's confident that we'll, we'll be able to have a similar setup at the minimum in terms of the audio and the video. Um, it still will be able to go out live, and it won't be impacted in that way. And plus, he did note that there's air conditioning. That's very important to mention, uh, this evening. Um, and that he will be keeping us updated on the Select Board's decisions on how to best use ARPA funding moving forward. There's strong support for this initiative.
Uh, he also said that if, um, it does get denied for ARPA funding, he is gonna be putting it into their budget, uh, the following year, I think it is. So, um, he definitely wants to go through with improving the AV systems in the schools.
So that's positive news.
Yes. Um, I will open it up to discussion on what you guys feel about moving our meetings.
I have a quick question about.
Yep.
Update. Um, is he looking to update more than just the Lincoln Street space? Or was, is he looking for a broader proposal, or he just?
He's, he's doing Lincoln Street, he's doing some of the, is he doing some of the Agonquin? He's doing the senior center, there's the town hall, like, there's a bunch of different things.
Sort of gotten to one lump for the ARPA.
And he thought that he could get, or then, but then what happened was, I don't know if it was the town planner, or if it was somebody else, but they said that because it's over, I think, five hundred, or whatever it was, over, um, they wanted him to go out to bid. And now he has to go through the bidding process to get.
Got to ask the lots.
Yes, that's the thing. So it took him back, because he was saying that he was trying to learn how. He's like, it's not something I typically do, so I don't. And I was like, oh, well, I was like, I don't know if he reached out to you. I was like, Keith is a great person who's done a few things, and Becky, I'm like, so, reach out to them if you have any questions with it and stuff like that.
Okay, so this is part of a larger package, got you?
Yeah.
I think originally, it did not include the schools. And then, uh, through Kelly's advocacy action, two locations are added, Lincoln and the region.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I mean, I think that moving to Lincoln's a great idea. It's about ninety degrees in here right now. So, uh, I mean, I love air conditioning.
And it's on the first, first floor.
It's more accessible for visitors and.
There's a lot of, a lot of.
It would be in the cafeteria.
It would be in the cafetorium, I believe they call it. Um, so there is, um, there's a stage they have, I believe, a projected screen that could come down. Um, we would probably do a setup more of, um, parallel lines versus, um, a U shape or a V shape. We would do probably parallel lines, um, to have the conversations go across.
So we can, so Kelly and I will go over there with Dana and, and Keith, look at the setup, take some pictures, so people know what to expect. And I, I strongly encourage us to move in that direction.
I've got nothing else to.
And if the acoustics are better, because even tonight, Greg, when you went down to the retirees and your face went towards audience, I lost it. And I, I mean, I lost the audio. That's already happened. That has already happened. Um, so I could see why, when we're talking up here, I don't know what the valley is right there, but, you know, it's like.
There's a lot of background noise.
Yeah.
And the HVAC system.
The nice thing too about this is, um, when they do wire it and TV and all that stuff, it's also gonna give the school, um, the option for, if they do a performance on stage, they can mo- televise it, do anything they want, you know? So it's almost like a little mini theater too that they have.
Nice, very nice.
You know? So I feel like it opens up, you know, good things. Also, I feel like, you know, to put money into making this space better, doesn't really make sense. So finding a, a, a better location to invest in that money from the town seems so good. So, um, I, I don't think we need to do formal votes, but, um, I'll just say, um, all in favor of moving our new location for our meetings for the two thousand four, two thousand five school year to Lincoln Street.
Twenty-four.
Two thousand four, two thousand twenty-four. Two thousand twenty-four.
We were with you.
Two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, uh, school year to the Lincoln Street Cafetorium.
Yeah.
Yes, we've been working on this for how many years?
I know. I, ever since they finished the school, I was like, why aren't we here?
Email Keith LaBelle.
Yeah, because Keith was doing it during the COVID, wasn't he?
Yeah, I was like, why aren't we here?
Why aren't we over there?
Great. Um, subcommittee liaisons, we need to do a few, um, for summer-wise. Um, and we can discuss more for, um, next year.
What summer ones do we need to cover?
Well, we need to make sure we have warrants covered. So unless you wanna come off of warrants, if you're good with c- continuing it, then that's one.
Is the Peaslee added to your list?
I don't think we have yet.
I don't think we added that yet. So we have to add that, which it'll be Lauren and I on that for now. Does anyone want, I mean, we're the same committee as last year. Does anybody want to change?
Uh-uh, I don't.
Everyone's good with status quo. Okay, easy peasy.
See what I just, see what I just.
Check, check.
Done.
I just have one question. Greg, one of the liaisons that Kelly and I are on, it's the third from the bottom. Is that, is that a study group that is still viable or no? It was the K to twelve world language study group.
They've picked that up yet.
I think we should keep that.
Keep it there?
Open because.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I think that that, um, is something that they might be, um, kind of expanding. You know, how they're gonna potentially bring in languages to the younger schools and then things like that, I think. Could be a potential pickup in the next year or two, about that. Okay, if there's anything else that people wanna think about this summer, um, change, whatever, then we can do that in September. You can finalize. Otherwise, we'll just push it through. All right, enrollments?
So in your packet is enrollment report for May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. So we are monitoring enrollments very closely for twenty-four, twenty-five. We are looking, uh, very closely at grades two, um, and grades five. Um, those are the areas where there's not a lot of additional space. Um, so that will be something we'll monitor weekly over the summer months. The good news is grade two and grade five. So other than kindergarten, typically enrollments, um, pretty constant. It doesn't increase or decrease by m- by great numbers. Um, but it is an area we're watching, and we'll keep, I'll keep the chair, um, informed if anything changes significantly.
Any questions?
No question.
Uh, Becky?
Um, yeah.
Yeah.
Wondering, when you highlight two and five, I was keeping an eye on them, because there's not a lot of room. Is it just because of the student number, or is it because of what else is going on in those schools? Just because I'm worried, because four also has three of the schools highlighted.
Yes, so typically, we, we look at all four schools, and because of the class size policy, we then say, how many seats exist in that grade, grade level?
Mm-hmm.
So, um, in that case, there is a school where there's capacity to add seats. Where in grades two and five, there's not, there's not a lot of capacity, there's a seat for two. Um, so we're, we really need to see how many students move out, families move away, and how many families move in. Um, and where my, Sheila, um, central office and Keith are monitoring that closely with registrations and enrollments.
Thanks.
Um, I have a question about the pre-K. On the first data sheet, you have their pre-K, and you have fourteen. But then when we go to the other sheet where you list out the schools, they're not listed. Am I missing something?
They're not in our schools.
So we typically have not added.
Pre-K is in, in Finn School.
Oh, okay.
So typically, we've not added pre-K enrollment, but we, I think we, we can in the future, um, to the actual enrollment sheet.
Okay. And Kelly clarified it, because she said their pre-K is over at Finn School.
Yeah.
Yes, but I think it's still for an highlight.
Yeah. Would you, would you, would you put the Northborough number in?
Just Northborough.
Because I know we're saying that we're pre-K through twelve.
Yeah, in the fifty-four, that's.
Just Northborough.
That's just Northborough.
Thank you.
And I'll turn it over to Becky for the, uh, monthly financial statement.
Okay. It's so hard to believe that we are officially in the last month of fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Um, the report that is in your packet is as of May thirty-first. Um, and as you can see, we have one hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars remaining on the bottom line, which represents approximately point four zero percent of the total budget, um, for FY twenty-four. Um, as we approach the fiscal year end, um, we have developed a plan for year-end spending. Um, two of the major areas that we are, um, focusing on are student devices, um, to prepare us for the upcoming school year, as well as curriculum resources. Um, so Keith, Stephanie, and I have been working closely on those purchases. Um, I do wanna thank, and I know they've all left, um, but I do wanna thank the principals and their staff, um, the central office leadership team, and the finance team for all their work over the past year. Um, there have been. There have been some challenges and unforeseen circumstances that have popped up, but I think we've all been able to work within the operating budget, and we've been able to allocate the resources that our students need, um, so I just wanna thank them and commend them for their work.
You mentioned devices, and it made me think, um, they're letting the kids keep them over the summer for certain grades.
Correct.
Makes me nervous.
Why, second question. I got that email, why?
I'm like, why, 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 I don't want that at my house? Is there something watching me?
Well, no, it's more of like liability reasons, like, uh.
So, I mean, I'm, I see the, I see how like, you know, collecting, distributing, and that, you know, and all that saves it, but, um, I just, I hope they'll come back. I hope we don't, I hope we don't lose any because of, you know.
Well, this is a, we're trying, and we'll see how it works. Other districts have done this, so it's not as if we're the first district to do this, but we are going to attempt, and then we'll assess John Parent, the IT director is coming on board.
Yep.
July fourteenth of the date. And, you know, we'll assess how it works. We also need to interact with parents and engage parents, like, how did it work? And then make a decision if you wanna repeat this a year from now.
And there are a few opportunities where teachers are, um, encouraging or, um, making kids aware of summer work that they can, sort of, to avoid summer slide, um, and an example would be at the middle school, a lot of our middle school math teachers were here tonight, and some of them are, um, working with students on continuing some of their work with Mathia, which is the online component of.
I'd love that, I would love a packet or a website or, you know, I mean, twenty minutes a day or twenty minutes a week, something like, yeah.
And so for the elementary, there's the option with ST math, for the high, or at the middle school with Mathia, and so I will follow up with the teachers to make sure that the communication is not just going to the kids, but is the parents are aware, and I know another thing that they were, someone was, our literacy coordinator was just checking with me about is because our Lexia licenses are also, um, something that can be used over the summer, so there's some reading opportunities there, so there are a few places where, now that people know it's happening, they've been reaching out and saying, you know, when does, because the rostering rolls over in the summers, and so there is a point where the kids will lose access temporarily while they get re-rostered, but it, it doesn't happen until August, so there is still an opportunity there.
Yeah, I would love that.
And I think the Lexia during the summer will be great, because, and the administrator can always see any progress that is made and how levels are changing. Same with the math?
Yep.
That's wonderful, there really is.
So I think there's some communicating we can do, they are just wrapping their heads around this opportunity, so I will work with them on the communication.
Yeah, so that's awesome, um, and the communication that went out, though, like, from what I read, it was like, keep it in a dry, cool place, like, I was totally ready to wrap this thing up, stick it in a drawer, label it, and be like, do not touch this.
Which is also an option.
Do not touch this until late August, you know, but if there are learning options that I can get them to do a little bit, I would be absolutely up for that, but, yeah, it would definitely have to be a communication to the parents and, because otherwise, my kid's not gonna tell me at all, I'm gonna be afraid that they're just on it to go on YouTube or something, right, and whatever, so, but if we can use it, that would be great, because I assume if the district collects it, right, it's just sitting in a storage room.
And I think it's also important to note that they are monitored and, and, um, internet.
Yep.
They are, but then, you know, oh, we had indoor recess today, and everybody was watching this on YouTube, you gotta see this funny video, Mom, I'm like, mm, okay. And yeah, I caught them at my own house, too, like, oh, they're, now they're in the other room, being a little too quiet, and, yep, they've got their school device on YouTube, watch, look at some app, so, yeah, absolutely, you still have to monitor it, even though they do have, you know, the sophomore and stuff.
I will entertain a motion, um, to approve the fiscal year twenty-four, more than generally.
So moved? Thanks.
That was, I don't know, I, I don't know, I don't know how you're gonna do that one.
Wow, I'm impressed. I'm gonna say, uh, motion by Kristen, and I'm gonna say seconded by Lauren.
That was perfect.
Perfect, any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you so much.
And lastly.
Thank you, Becky, for all your hard work.
And lastly, for the superintendent's report, uh, an update on MSBA, so I think the major milestone is that the town did form a Peasly building committee. I think there's a tremendous amount of expertise on the people that were selected by, um, the town administrator and the select board, so I think it is a really impressive group of people with a lot of experience in terms of construction projects, um, design, which is, is what you want on a building committee. Um, so the select board, I believe, appointed a chair, uh, to the committee, and I think will be convening shortly. The eligibility phase, there are certain requirements, but of all the phases, it's the, it's the one where there's the least amount of work. And with the feasibility, uh, funding already appropriated to the town meeting, that's a major, uh, major part of the work, which is done. So I think we're in a pretty good place, but I, we will have a meeting, I'm sure, before the end of June.
Do we know who the chair is? Can you release it or not?
I don't.
I don't have that.
It's there, it's in the link, is that public information?
It, yeah.
Was it?
I don't have it at the top.
I, I know it's in.
Yeah, it's, um, where was it? I believe Erica Hall.
Yes, that's it.
She's a resident, she is a realtor.
Yeah, I thought the whole committee would get together and vote.
It's interesting.
So there are nine voting members, and then, um, four, seven ex officio.
Yep.
Members.
And I was happy to see that we have two members on it. I think that sometimes in the past was said we had to have only one, but, uh, listening to the town meeting.
I, well, I expressed it to Mitch ahead of time, that I thought it made sense, and I heard that he advocated for us to.
He did, because I was, I watched remotely the selectman's meeting when they comprised the committee, and they mentioned both of you, and Mitch did have good words to say about having two members on, so I think it's very beneficial. So, thank you. And we know where you guys are gonna be.
School committee members report, Bryce?
Uh, the wellness committee met, um, and discussed a number of things at the last meeting. We discussed a wellness coach, that there is funding for a wellness coach, um, and Mary Lynn's gonna apply to get one, because she would, we discussed how other districts found it very helpful to have a wellness coach, so that's something that she'll be applying for and, and keep us updated on. Uh, we discussed the food policy, especially in K through twelve and at the different levels, um, there's a very strict food policy, everyone here knows. Um, but communicating that to parents and teachers, um, there's a lot of, I guess, occasions where food is coming in through schools or celebrations, or is positive reinforcement and things like that, um, so we discussed better communication on that front, to keep safety, you know, for the purposes of safety and equity. We also brainstormed ways, um, to get more wellness into the wellness days, so we discussed a lot about the wellness days for next year, how it might be incorporated more into the schools when they're in school during a wellness day. And, uh, also for the half-days that are being implemented last year, what are the groups in town that we could work with, so we came up with a list of other groups, like, say, um, the rec department, for example, can they have some programs during the afternoon that some students could go to, um, to promote wellness and have those topics, that was another group that we were talking to. Um, and, and it was best way to get in touch with parents, that's the only thing we're discussing. How do we communicate these things to parents, and so we were discussing those types of things. I think that was.
Did you guys talk about Be Well Northborough at all, or?
Um, that was one of the groups, I think, that got mentioned, you know, we were talking about afternoon programming, partnering with extended day recreation, the library.
I think, I'm assuming they're still doing it, they've done it the last couple of years, the event.
At the end of the school year? Yes, they are doing the, yeah, they are, yeah, uh, yeah, so then, like, the health department, the library, the recreation, uh, even like NTP, talking to other groups that sometimes have programming. Let's see what we can do around that, yep.
Um, so the Coalition for Equity met last Thursday, um, our conversation revolved around the incidents in Southborough, and we reflected as a coalition and as a district on, you know, what gaps exist, um, and so we really sort of focused in on, um, you know, some type of point person in our district as, uh, someone that educators, staff, um, families can go to, who will be the diversity, equity and inclusion expert. Um, so, so we really took a lot of time to discuss that, because the coalition is made up of Northborough, Southborough, region, school committee members, administration, um, educators, uh, building level administrators from all of, you know, three districts, as well as family members. So, um, it, it does span the three districts, so although those incidences did not occur in Southborough, it, it is very important conversation we had at the coalition.
In Northborough. The events didn't happen.
Sorry, although the events didn't happen in Northborough, they happened in Southborough, um, it was a very important conversation we had at the coalition, so.
Anything else? Um, I have two, the first one is that, um, I think several of us attended it, I think Lauren, you were there.
That's gonna, that's sharing communication, distribution and communication.
Okay.
You can talk about it today.
Can you?
Jump it now.
Want to cue it up?
Yeah, well, I, when I saw that, um, I saw. I saw when, um, uh, NSPAC sent out an email on, on Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, and it was thanking everybody for attending it. Um, on the second page, they had, uh, the video that if you wanted to watch it, Go the Distance, the art showcase, and then it was the program, because what I wanted to acknowledge was, and the word acknowledges there, is the staff members, uh, all the way from Algonquin, Northborough and Southborough, the teachers that got the award recipients. And I think that, right there on the right-hand side, that's the program there, and we did have, and a, uh, somebody who was award recipient, recipient that just left, and that's Peter Olson. So he is also the president of Northborough Teachers Association.
Also the retiree.
Karen Norwright.
Karen Norwright, I hear.
The retiree, okay.
She, she, she was on.
And it was just, it was a wonderful night, and I wanted to thank Kelly, because she's always been our representative and bringing the information back to us during this section, but it was just so heartwarming, because some of the little kids came down and were running, you know, when their teacher was identifying, they wanted to be a picture with them and everything. So it was really wonderful, and I thought it was a great evening, I think most of us attended this, didn't we?
I think it was the three of us.
I think most of us, three of us did, and then I did attend, see, when you're retired, you can do these things, um, because my principal wouldn't give me the time off, and that was, uh, was the Titan, I wouldn't even dare ask, uh, was the Titan Games the following day, it was a hot day. Uh, and, but it was great, they had student athletes, had an opening ceremony, didn't make it for that, and didn't stay for the picnic lunch, but I was there for the track and field events, very heartwarming, and, and even the staff members that were pushing the wheelchairs for, for the kids, and they even had smiles on their face, so you, it was very infectious, and you, you better put a smile on their face, because if they're working hard and they're doing it as a attendee, you can do the same thing. And it was wonderful, it was on the athletic, uh, complex at Algonquin, so it was, it was a wonderful event. And the other thing I just want to mention is that I just happened to go, to go to the, uh, select board's meeting on Monday, and, uh, the chairperson, Mitch Cohen, asked if I wanted to speak, and I said no, and I was sitting way in the back row, but then a question came up about, um, they're using, we do have a capital project for FY twenty twenty-six, uh, to repair the fields. I mean, the tennis court and the basketball courts, and, um, so the question had come up by a board member, why wasn't this brought up at town meeting? So I just said, I raised my hand, I'll clarify this, that it wasn't our five-year capital project. Um, but I'd also like to say that in the presentation that Scott Charpentier was making as the DPW director, he did mention the collaboration that was very highlighted between Greg and Keith, and himself, and with Ally. And so I thought that was, that was really good, and I passed out to all the members, I took some notes of it, because there were some things that I thought would be important for, for the board members to be, who's gonna be on the capital project for next year, it might be helpful, and also so to have alliance and communication with administration, so I thought it was worthwhile, though I didn't expect to speak. Thank you, that's it.
Well, I appreciate Joan, because you took care of my Titan Games and going the distance.
Oh, you probably have something more you can add.
And you took the communications off, so.
Okay, so make me last next time.
No, no, I appreciate it, shortens me, which is great. Um, one thing for NSPAC, they had their annual elections, and, um, they have a new, a couple of new board members, so president is Alyssa, uh, Deon, I'm like, I never pronounce her name right. Uh, communications coordinator is Shysta Kreschi. Um, secretary is Nicole Marr, uh, treasurer is Joel Gilmore, and technology officer is gonna be Andrea Hamilton, so, um, they have a couple new members that are joining, um, which is nice. Um, it is still very light on the Northborough side, it's more, um, representation from the Southborough side, so, um, Northborough families, if you're out there, and, um, you know, come on down to their meetings and stuff, and, um, get involved, and they're a great group of, um, parents to help, um, with our schools, so, um, that's NSPAC. Superintendent Advisory Meeting is Friday, town, the calendar, um, is tomorrow. And then town meeting, I was gonna talk about the, the thing, but you've covered that one, too, so, uh, good. What is it, does anybody? Um, so, the policy, educational policy, there's none at this time, um, the policy development, um, uh, for distribution, one of the things is my suggestion is, um, for the second read of the new donation sponsorship and advisory policy, I'm wondering if we can vote on that in September, and the reason why is I'm wondering if, I sent it to a few PTO people to review, um, just to kind of feel them out and see, because, um, they are a large sponsorship for us, so I thought if maybe we could get some input from them, it'd be better, and seeing that the meeting is on Friday, I thought that would be a good way to do that, so if everyone's okay, we'll just move along with that, and we'll put that on to the September thing. And then it's just a distribution of review, policy, visitation and observation. I don't think we have to do.
Distribution.
Just distribution. Personnel report. Do you wanna talk about?
Sure, so in your packet, it's a personnel report as, as of June fifth, so, um, I think the HR department and principals are doing a great job at getting ahead of hiring. So you'll see a lot of appointments, and, um, some of the appointments are for the twenty-four, twenty-five academic year. Um, we do have a number of transfers as well in terms of meeting student needs, and also, um, grade three teacher, um, from Lincoln going to Peasly. And then some retirements, and then also not on this personnel report is, um, Dr. Jennifer Lipton announced that she's accepted a position at a, another district in a leadership capacity, so, um, that is a position that we'll need to discuss and think about, um, how to best fill that position. So those are the updates for the personnel report.
I think that, um, I want to thank Dr. Lipton, her, her work, um, in the district, that she brought to us with the expansion of the SEL and the development of it, and I think that she's leading us in a really great spot from when she came, and I would love to explore, um, the diversity and equity and opportunity in those, and see if we can, um, build that up, you know, since we are in a pretty decent spot, I feel, at least that's what's being reported to us, that the SEL is kind of like.
Yeah, I think that, um, uh, Dr. Lipton has created great systems and structures for us to build on. So we are working closely over the summer to really think about what's the work, where, you know, where will the gaps be? And, and how do we continue to work, uh, in our district around SEL? And at the same time, it's an opportunity to explore. And at the same time, it's an opportunity to explore, you know, thinking about how do we, family and community engagement and belonging and, and cultural competency. So really thinking about what's, what's the priority in terms of the work right now that we're facing. So that's discussions we're having as a leadership team.
Am I, am I hearing right that there's a conversation being had that maybe Lipton O'Connor's position is not recruited, but yet a diversity, equity, and inclusion position is the one that's recruited?
Potentially.
We're having those conversations in general around what do we need? So what do we need and, and.
Those two things don't seem separate to me.
And that's the, those are the conversations we're having.
Okay. I would not want them to be treated separately. Okay.
And I do, I want to just explain also, in our coalition meeting, we had this similar discussion, and we talked about SEL, equity, diversity, inclusion, and how there is sort of this overlap as well. So we did have those conversations. They were just beginning conversations.
Yeah, I think it's a good conversation to have, and I really love the SEL framework that's been built. I think it's one of the greatest things. When I first said, my kids first started going on Lincoln Street, I was like, oh, rock brain, okay, yep, I can work with this, right? Which I didn't expect and, and thought was great. So I definitely want to see that continue full force and move forward in whatever position, you know, best fits the district.
I would echo that. I think that we have needs in both areas. How we can meet the needs with whatever, you know, system we have in place. But also in terms of personnel, I think is really important.
All right.
Communications, we already, thanks to Joan, we already did that, go the distance. Action on open meeting minutes of May first, twenty twenty-four. Action of Northborough School Committee Capital Planning Subcommittee, open meeting minutes of October twenty-third, twenty-three. And then I kind of teased it earlier this evening, but we need to amend our vote for the.
So the open meeting minutes?
The open meeting minutes of April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. It was this special open meeting, and it was the minutes from our pre-town meeting.
And that was, we approved those last meeting.
We approved them last month.
Is it just because I wrote secretary?
And it's just because you put secretary?
Okay, yeah.
So I just checked, like, does, does that even warrant, but we should have it approved.
Yeah, I was a secretary. I just, I've been secretary so much.
I know. Well, I apologize.
That's fine.
I apologize that I didn't catch it, like, too, like, the, I mean.
It was the only time this whole year we even.
That you needed minutes taken. I know, I know.
You just needed a title beside mom, so. And I think it was one sentence. It was a one sentence, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it is. It's one minute.
All right, I can make a motion.
Okay.
Can you just tell me the date of those minutes as well?
Yep.
I think they'll be two separate, I think they'll be two separate motions. Thank you. So first, I, I move to approve the open meeting minutes of May first, twenty twenty-four, and the Northborough School Committee's Capital Planning Subcommittee Open Meeting Minutes of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
And I move to amend the Northborough School Committee's Special Open Meeting Minutes of Monday, April twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, to remove the word secretary next to my name.
Second. Motion by Lauren, seconded by Joan. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Sorry, hate to be nitpicky, but.
That's fine.
As the not secretary, I approve this.
Future agenda items, we have.
You have the policy.
Yes.
We have, we're gonna, in September, a discussion of free pre-K discussion. Yes, I know, we just did free K a few years back, but now we're moving on to free pre-K and stuff.
Well, they're going into fifth grade now, the less people paid.
Wow.
What about the Malacan Middle School?
That's right.
Will there be something on that?
Yep.
Malacan, we'll put that on.
We usually have summer updates.
Second class, then that was free.
Yeah.
She's going into third grade now. I thought she was the first.
Bus transportation, sorry, Keith.
No, she's the worst one.
But we are going to be opening up.
No, but she's going in the third.
Contrary, and out to bed and all that stuff, so at some point, we'll have to have that on our agenda. Food services. Enough said.
Can I just, can I just maybe point that, like, food services is a broad stroke on the agenda, could take us all night? Is there maybe a specific, could we drill down a little bit?
Yeah.
My recommendation is, I think there's a lot on the first agenda of the year. If we have food services in October, and really, then we can, we can formulate the.
Yeah, I mean, I guess as long as it's not October to then January to, but okay.
What we really want to focus down on, right, is the, the nutrition. Right, that's the, the topic that you, am I correct? So maybe it would be easier to learn about the nutritional standards first, and then.
There's a great, there's a great, Kyle and Keith put together a great demo slide on all the backstory behind sourcing and menu checkboxes. If you want to share that, that may lead us in a good direction for the conversation for the night.
Good background.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all the things that you wouldn't think would be, like, regulated that are.
Well, I'm sure.
Yeah. Or you would just go, like, how did you land there?
Right. I remember the size of apples being an issue there.
Yes.
Any other major things? And, and I'm saying future agenda items, it might not be the September, you know, they might be October. But obviously, budget goals, we'll be having, you know, we'll have our standard type of things to open up our discussion and like that.
Were we having data from the middle school?
I would think probably maybe October or November would be my assumption.
We might have a cell phone update.
Yeah, cell phone update, maybe. Okay, anything else seeing? Approval of bills and payrolls, we're good. Audience sharing, we are good. Any other business? No? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Kristen, seconded by Lauren, all in favor? Unanimously adjourned at nine oh eight. Thank you so much.